Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thanks for having us tonight to talk a little bit about our draft recommendations of the Tourism Strategic Plan. Joining me tonight is Chris Fair, President and CEO, and Tim Hasid, Director of Placemaking of Residence Consultancy, to share with us the draft recommendations. And before they make that presentation, I just wanted to give a couple of points of how we got to tonight. Last summer, we collaborated with Experience Scottsdale to determine the plan goals and the, to actually work with creating the next Tourism Strategic Plan. We vetted and we finalized that input based on feedback from the Tourism Development Commission and also Experience Scottsdale's Board of Directors. In September of 2021, we went through a procurement process where we hired Residence Consultancy to create our next tourism plan in partnership with Experience Scottsdale. And just as a point of reference, the Cities Economic Development Strategic Plan that was accepted by City Council in June of 2021 was also awarded to Residence as well. So we had a steering committee that really established the work, and we set the plan, the development goals and objectives with Residence, and we've been providing feedback on the assessments, the research and the recommendations, and also to connect Residence with stakeholders as well. In December of 2021 and January of this year, we renaissanceed extensive engagement that included each of you, our city manager, many city department directors, hoteliers, restaurateurs, property owners, art galleries, and the list goes on to include more than 100 partners and stakeholders. We also did two surveys, one for Residence with more than 2,300 responses, and the other with visitors with nearly 1,300 responses. We also required Residence to review 21 studies and plans of the cities to assess those. And based on all that, we're here tonight to share with you the draft recommendations. And during the presentation that Chris and Tim will be giving, we'll stop at a few points and ask for your input and direction. So thank you, Chris and Tim.
Great. Thank you, Karen, and thank you, Council, for your time and attention to look at this plan tonight. There's a lot of ground to cover here, so we'll hit some of just the highlights and really focus in on the recommendations. In setting this up, we're going to talk you through a little bit just the brief background on the project. Some of the research as we look at what are the macro trends, obviously, no industry has been more impacted by the pandemic than travel and tourism, and our focus is on what's next in terms of the types of experiences that U.S. travelers and international travelers are looking for. From there, we defined who might be the visitor of the future for Scottsdale. Does it look somewhat different than the visitors that we might have catered to in the past? And that was workshop with many stakeholders, and I'll share some of the highlights with that. And then we'll get into the draft recommendations. So just as way of background where we are in the process, there's four phases to this. The first phase involved many of the research activities that Karen mentioned, in terms of the visitor survey, engagement with stakeholders, and Residence. And then the second phase was looking at some of the benchmarking and also some of the assessment around Scottsdale as a tourism product. Third phase got into the evaluation and recommendations, which is where we are today, and sharing with you. And our next phase out of this will then be, once the recommendations are adopted, will be to develop an action plan on how we go about implementing this project. So first, just briefly kind of touching on, you know, what's important for Scottsdale, we realize, is the affluent traveler. Our firm Residence since 2008 has been surveying the wealthiest 10% of households, so for over a decade, you know, going on 16 years now, we've been surveying this particular audience. I think just a couple of quick highlights of, you know, what's important to travelers today in the post-COVID environment. We did this study both just prior to the pandemic and then in the last couple of months, and you can see the top factors here of safety, accessibility by commercial flights, and scenery and nature. And for us, Scottsdale checks all three of these boxes. So that's one of the things we're looking at, is there anything that we're not in sync with in terms of the priority of affluent travelers today? In terms of the types of vacations, we looked at, and there's a long list here, we won't go into that in detail, but it's been provided in the report. Also, thinking about types of accommodations, that full-service hotels, upscale hotels, resorts, all-inclusive resorts are still the most preferred types of accommodation for affluent travelers today, although we have seen significant rise in the popularity of home sharing, such as Airbnb, which we're all familiar with. Some of the things we also think about are the types of activities that are important to them on vacation. We can see the top activities, the most desirable are trying local food and drink, learning new things, engaging with nature, fine dining, fun attractions, shopping. So again, we can look at Scottsdale and see that we're really checking off the top of this list, which is, positions us well for the future. So those are just a few highlights as we think about the macro environment of what affluent travelers are looking for today. As we worked through with your stakeholders, we looked at who might be the segments, not just demographically but psychographically, what types of travelers are we looking for in the future? Who's come to Scottsdale in the past? We identified five segments, and this is an algorithm that divides travelers in the United States based on why they'd go on vacation. And then, secondly, what do they participate while they're on vacation? The first group are sophisticated explorers, these are culturally oriented travelers, tend to be a bit older. The second group are all-in enthusiasts, they tend to be a bit younger, half of them have kids, they're looking to do all kinds of different activities in all kinds of different places. Our third group are active adventurers, these are skiers, golfers, hikers, mountain bikers. The last two are pretty self-explanatory in terms of family-oriented travelers, they like all-inclusive resorts, they're more apt to go to theme parks, et cetera, cruises. And same with our last group, convenience travelers, that are really looking just at all-inclusives and cruises. So we look at who are we attracting today? The black bars show you that, you know, our top two audiences when we surveyed visitors fit into this active adventurer category, and the second are the family-oriented frugals. But as we worked with stakeholders, we said, you know, really, the future visitor that we want to attract to Scottsdale will continue to be the active adventurers. These are people that participate in sports, health, fitness, active, and things like golf. But really, we want to shift our focus and look at how do we grow our all-in enthusiast audience, this younger traveler that may have or may not have kids, but is interested in a wide variety of experiences. That's only 19% of our market today, but we felt that that should be up there with active adventurers. So our frame for developing this tourism plan was really focusing in on these two types of travelers from a psychographic perspective. I've kind of explained who the two types are already. And from a business perspective, of course, there's conferences and meetings, corporate events, incentive travel, leisure travel, which is growing in popularity, and that was identified by stakeholders as our top two priorities should really be conferences and meetings, and then looking at how do we grow the leisure travel, those travelers that are coming here for a conference and meeting, and getting them to stay for a few extra days of leisure. The next activity, once we talked about who our target audience has been, who we want it to be in the future, was also looking at and benchmarking Scottsdale from a product supply side perspective. Visitor survey was done with more than 1,200 visitors, as Karen said. Community survey, more than 2,300 community residents participated in that survey, and we interviewed over 100 stakeholders to identify what are some of the key issues and key opportunities. And the reality is, the good news is that overall, you know, Scottsdale is a very successful destination. There's not something here that's broken that we're trying to fix. You know, really, it is how do we best chart the future for the destination and what role tourism can play, not only as a significant part of the economy, but also as an agent of economic development. So there were no key weaknesses identified through this assessment process. Really, it was more about fine tuning and improving some of the things that we already have as key strengths. And these are really summarized on this slide in terms of our key strengths as a destination, accommodation, dining, outdoor activities, shopping, our connectivity with the Sky Harbor Airport, nature and parks, golf. And some of the things that we identified as opportunities, though, were really about how do we kind of leverage and grow not just arts in terms of performing arts, but also actually the production of arts and creative industries. How do we improve and grow some of our museums? How do we improve and grow some of our tours and those types of activities? How do we grow events and festivals? And how do we think about developing our character neighborhoods into actual tourism assets? So again, not looking to fix anything, but leveraging these key strengths, and then also developing some of these things that were identified as key opportunities relevant to the target audiences we're looking to attract. So with that, we developed a vision statement that said this, "As one of the country's most recognized and desirable destinations, Scottsdale welcomes visitors from around the world who come to enjoy an urban sanctuary in the heart of the Sonoran Desert. From hiking trails to shopping safaris, sports to arts and culture, Scottsdale offers a wealth of experiences that attracts active adventurers, urban enthusiasts, business meetings, and world-class events throughout the year. As stewards of the destination, Experience Scottsdale promotes its unique characteristics, and the City of Scottsdale develops and manages the facilities, programming, and events required to enrich both the visitor and resident experience in a manner that seeks to minimize the impact of tourism on our environment while maximizing its economic benefits for everyone involved." So with that, how do we get there? Really looking at eight Experience principles, and the recommendations that Tim will walk you through really fall into these eight areas that were developed as priorities for the Tourism and Events Strategic Plan. And these are known in particular order, but they're centered around arts and culture, business meetings and events, community well-being, festivals and events, Old Town, outdoor pursuits, sports tourism, and travel and hospitality advocacy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim, and then we'll pause after we go through each section here and offer up any comments or questions that you might have, please.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. So the first one here is around arts and culture as we think about our first Experience principle of really positioning and building off of the strength of Scottsdale as a arts destination, but also thinking about how do we evolve that positioning in transforming the destination as a place where arts is consumed, exchanged, and discussed within the nation. Four different strategies really make up this Experience principle, the first one being positioning Scottsdale as a center for artists and arts, as we think about building off of these strengths and making sure that we're celebrating art, but also allowing for artists to express themselves within Scottsdale and build the development of the arts community and clusters as part of the strategic plan. The second, growing the Scottsdale Cultural Corridor, this is something that's currently being discussed and thinking about how do we build connectivity and strengthen the cultural corridor within Yelltown and connect some of our institutions in order to build a strong visitor-centric experience which celebrates culture but also involves visitors and also the community as part of that initial initiative. And then number three, bringing museum events and experiences outdoors, of how do we think about art being not only celebrated and consumed indoors, but also bringing the arts experiences outdoors and really bringing that experience to the public, both from a visitor and community perspective. And the fourth one here, making Scottsdale the top culinary and wine destination in Arizona, as we think about some of the strengths and the discussions that we've had with a number of stakeholders within the community and the growing scene of how do we strengthen that positioning and continue to build that positioning as one of the key strengths and one of the key propositions from an experiential standpoint when it comes to attracting visitors? And of course, as we look at some of the market trends within the tourism industry of thinking about how culinary and the fact of enjoying local cuisine is something that's growing as we saw at the beginning of the presentation. So these are really four key strategies that encapsulate the arts and culture principle. I'll pause there, but of course, there's a number of subactions that go under each one of the strategies that are currently being discussed with Karen's apartment and also Experience Scottsdale in terms of actually implementing some of these strategies. But just want to allow Mayor and Council to speak to any questions or interrogations based on the four strategies that you see on your screen, and then we'll move to the next one.
Okay, so seeing none, continue.
Thank you. The next piece is really focused around business meetings and events, and as Chris described, thinking about how do we cater to some of the key audiences when it comes to that business audience, and how do we also make sure that Scottsdale remains a destination of choice where companies decide to meet and bring employees and clients together for corporate gatherings and meetings. This initiative is extremely important as we think also about the economic benefit of business travel for the destination and the economic impact of business travel for the destination. And two strategies were identified in terms of actually improving Scottsdale's position here in terms of actually developing more off-site venues of, based on some of the feedback from some of the advisory boards, of thinking about how do we expand off-site venues to cater to new market trends and also celebrate the uniqueness of Scottsdale as a business meetings destination, of looking at potential new opportunities or existing opportunities in terms of expanding that current offering. And then the second is aligning meetings and events with target industries, based on our work as part of the Economic Development Strategy, the importance of some of the clusters that were identified, of making sure that when we're looking to attract companies and meetings, of actually making sure that we're also looking at it from a holistic perspective with choose Scottsdale in terms of actually bringing the right types of meetings and events to the destination. Of course, not excluding the existing business market, but also expanding that and aligning some of the new outreach opportunities with the different clusters that were identified as part of the Economic Development Strategy. So relatively straightforward, but I'll pause there and see if there are any questions.
So I would just, if we can comment then, as you come to the end of your points. You know, there's still some residual effect of COVID, there's some hesitation, I think the rules have changed from the business world, the expectations are different as they've restarted. So I'd be kind of cautious about how, how much return we're going to necessarily get from that one, but the old rules just don't apply anymore, and we'll see what happens. You know, I think you should be reporting back kind of what the action is on it from a business perspective. Okay, community well-being, did you want to?
I have a quick one.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
When you say develop more off-site venues, are you talking about having more facilities that can handle smaller conferences? Or are you talking about like cultural things, like more museums, or both? It's both. A little bit of actually making sure that our, those that want conference spaces beyond the hotels can utilize some of our museums and our center performing arts, for instance, Museum of the West, but also looking at potential places that could house conference areas. And I know there's...
Okay, thank you.
And even based on the Mayor's comment in terms of actually looking at how the business community is shifting towards different types of events, of making sure that Scottsdale as a destination is reacting to that trend through that exploration of off-site venues. Community well-being, the third component, made of seven key strategies here. The first one, establishing Scottsdale as a well-being community and destination, making sure that we're positioning Scottsdale that way, both from a visitor perspective, but also a community perspective in terms of actually staying true to some of the values of our community as we expand the destination. The second strategy here, focusing on community quality of life as part of outreach with the community, we heard about resident sentiment towards the industry, making sure that we're remaining and conserving the quality of life of our community and balancing that as part of the strategic plan. Number three, developing a unique wellness experiences as we think about Scottsdale's strengths and current positioning of how do we expand some of these wellness experiences in partnership with our private partners. Number four, position Scottsdale as a thought leader in sustainable tourism. Of course, there's been a reshuffle in the industry and a real focus on sustainability and what does that look like, both from a resource standpoint, but also a sustainability practice standpoint with some of our partners, both public and private, and how do we continue that discussion and really spearhead that discussion in Scottsdale and across the nation? Number five, recognize industry best practices, which is closely linked to the previous one in terms of actually making sure that we're, as an organization, able to recognize these best practices with our public and private sectors and making sure that we're celebrating some of the successful stories that have already happened in Scottsdale and continue to support some of these efforts. Number six here, grow sustainability-focused events and programming as we think about sustainability and talking and communicating about sustainability of how do we think about some of our existing events and expanding some of these events to also cover sustainability topics and really bring that thought leadership to life as part of these initiatives. And number seven, support new connectivity options. Of course, connectivity is important in terms of actually diversifying connectivity and transportation options of how do we also make sure that the strategic plan supports what other departments are working on in terms of actually bringing and celebrating pedestrian walkways and so on.
Okay, I see no comment, but go on.
Thank you.
And, you know, no need to read us what we can read, but elaborate on the item if you wish.
Perfect.
It would be better, and we can read what the statement is, but you're adding a commentary to it, so, thank you.
The next one is festivals and events, as we think about Scottsdale as being a key destination for festivals, events, and making sure that we're also really focusing both on outdoor events, but also indoor events, of actually focusing our events calendar on expanding the length of a season and celebrating existing events, but also expanding opportunities to really expand on the season, seasonality of these events. So strategy number one is really around increasing the positive impact of these events and expanding or attracting year-round events. There's a number of events that are already taking place of trying to think about how do we optimize and start optimizing resources to expand the activation of these events. There's a number of partners that are involved. Canal conversions is one example of how do we think about expanding that into a bigger scale event based on the resources that are already mobilized as part of this event and really maximizing the economic impact of some similar events when it comes to festivals and events. And number two, which was identified through our initial assessment of the infrastructure of diversifying Westworld's hosting capacities, we went through a relatively lengthy assessment of other and similar event venues and thinking about opportunities to actually expand different types of rooms and capacities within Westworld and thinking about expanding its capacity to host other types of events. Number three, focused on the civic center and the performing arts capacity of really supporting the civic center as one key gathering place for the community and making sure that some of the programs that are being introduced are also supportive of ongoing programming within the civic center and going beyond that as we think about strategy number three. Strategy number four, increasing off-season visitation to Scottsdale Stadium. Scottsdale Stadium is a successful venue, but as we think about some of the other actions of trying, making sure that we're able to diversify the use of Scottsdale Stadium in addition to spring training and also balancing the use between visitors and the community and really diversifying the types of events that are being hosted, and also expanding Scottsdale Stadium's capacity to host events that are taking place in other areas of Old Town and expanding that to the Scottsdale Stadium at the same time. And then number five, looking at the special events ordinance in terms of actually reviewing that and considering an update in terms of actually facilitating the organization of events within the public realm from some of our partners who are behind some of our successful events, and allowing new partners also to take part in terms of actually organizing new types of events within our different areas of Old Town and beyond.
Thank you, continue.
Thank you. The next strategy is really focused around Old Town as we think about Old Town being really the heart of the Scottsdale experience, especially from a visitor perspective, being one of the key shopping, dining, and cultural nightlife destinations, both for the visitor but also for the community, and really focusing on Old Town as part of the strategies that you'll see next. The first strategy is really focused around placemaking initiatives as we think about the vibrancy in Old Town and remaining that vibrant component of Old Town, of making sure that we're continuously supporting placemaking initiatives, both from a arts point of view, as we discussed in the arts and culture perspective, but also from a programming point of view in terms of actually bringing ongoing activation in Old Town and making sure that Old Town is vibrant and resonates with our target audiences. Number two is around mixed-use development in Old Town, of how do we diversify the use of some of our spaces, existing spaces or new spaces, in terms of actually bringing new types of activities, new types of businesses in our Old Town and diversifying the experience in Old Town. Number three is really around guiding hotel development in Old Town. We worked with HVS, our partner on this project, on identifying strategies in terms of growth potential, and one of the growth areas in regards to hospitality was identified in Old Town as we think about Old Town, how do we start guiding the development of hotels in Old Town from a strategic point of view and try to cluster some of the activity around the hotels in Old Town with a more strategic focus. Number four is really focused around walkability and multimodal access within Old Town of how do we support some of the work that has been established by the transportation development and continue to push walkability and alternative modes of transportation in Old Town from our hotels into Old Town and other areas, and making sure that we're diversifying these options as we move this forward. Number five, strengthen the positioning of character districts in Old Town. A number of character districts have been identified as part of Old Town, and there's a belief that, and a potential to further expand the promotion of these districts in Old Town and make sure that each district is aligned with some of the key promises in terms of what types of experiences are being clustered, but also what is being promoted as part of these districts, especially from a visitor point of view, and how visitors consume the destination and how can they better understand their perspective from looking at Old Town and the types of experiences that they can enjoy as visitors, and also expanding that communication framework to the community too. And the last one is around the organizational and governance structure of Old Town, in order to be able to implement some of these strategies of looking and exploring a sustainable organizational and funding structure to really enhance Old Town tourism and placemaking initiatives, of what does that governance look like in Old Town in order to be able to implement and achieve the previous strategies that were just presented to you.
Thank you.
Outdoor pursuits is really focused on the natural environment and outdoor experiences. The environment in Scottsdale is quite unique and a characteristic and a key driver of visitation to Scottsdale from a visitor point of view of how do we continue to emphasize the use of the natural environment and some of the strengths in that regard, and how do we continue to promote key activities and experiences in Scottsdale? This Experience principle is made of five different strategies. The first one is elevating the Preserve as a premier outdoor destination, trying to think about how do we communicate to our visitors the Preserve and how can they actually enjoy the Preserve from a visitor standpoint? The desert, as part of our survey to our visitors, was identified as a key driver and an authentic characteristic, sorry, of Scottsdale, of how do we communicate that to our visitors and make sure that we also frame some of the experiences around the Preserve moving forward as part of the strategic plan. Strategy number two is around expanding outdoor active programming, of how do we also look at different types of events that also celebrate outdoor activities and outdoor programming? Scottsdale is an active destination, and that's something that's celebrated by the visitors that decide to visit Scottsdale, of how do we continue not only to expand our programming around arts and culture, but also expand that programming around outdoor activities? Number three, activate the Arizona Canal, of how do we think about the canal as being a real connector of our community and look at opportunities to activate the canal and think about the canal as a true asset within our community. think about the canal as a true asset within our community and making sure that we're also thinking about new types of experiences, in this case, more active experiences, of course, and really building off of the canal as one of the key assets and moving that forward as an outdoor activity asset for our visitors based on current uses and also improving informational and wayfinding along the canal so that visitors are aware of the use of the canal and some of the potential activities that happened along the canal. Number four, promoting easy access to outdoor recreation and attractions of how do we, as a visitor, enjoying the destination, how do we promote some of the outdoor activities that are available, and how do we facilitate the consumption of some of the, these activities within the destination and making sure that as a destination, we're really honing on the operational component of how do we bring and facilitate the access from a visitor standpoint. And oftentimes, the community and the residents are well aware of some of the outdoor activities, but sometimes visitors aren't as aware of some of these activities as we think about building that visitor experience around outdoor activities. And the last one is really focused around cycling of the opportunity to really continue to promote and grow the Scottsdale as a cycling destination, some of the existing events in Scottsdale and the growing cycling movement in that regards and the number of people that actually travel across the country to enjoy nice weather and cycling and making sure that we're also following that path in terms of actually positioning Scottsdale on the map when it comes to the cycling community and bring new types of programming and new times, new types of events within the destination.
Continue.
One of the last ones here is around sports tourism as we think about both amateur sports, collegiate sports, and professional sports of making sure that Scottsdale is a key destination for the different levels of sports and competitions year-round, both from a events perspective, but also from a business and organizational perspective. This experience principle is based on three key strategies. The first one, expanding amateur sports participation year-round. As we think about amateur sports being a growing segment of the market of how does Scottsdale really position itself as a destination for amateur sports moving forward. And then number two, increase outdoor sports programming in terms of actually bringing new types of events in this case. And number three, anchoring Scottsdale as a base camp for collegiate and professional sports, and this really speaks to the types of events that are being hosted in Scottsdale and the opportunity to do so moving forward when it comes to celebrating and also organizing these types of events within the destination.
Good, on to travel and hospitality.
The last one here to close, the experience principle is really focused about, around travel and hospitality advocacy. The first one is really making sure that as a destination, we're stewed for diversity and inclusion within the industry of how do we continue to push diversity and inclusion as part of the industry, both from an organizational standpoint, but also with our partners and make sure that we're pushing the, the model forward in that regards and making sure that we're working with our different partners and stakeholders to improve diversity and inclusion within the industry. And number two, advocating for tourism in the region. There's a need to advocate for the industry in, within the region and really recognizing the importance of the industry to our community, to our residents, and to visitors and moving that forward as part of this particular strategy. And then number three, supporting and advocating for tourism labor force development as we are all experiencing there's a real shortage of service labor in most destinations of how do we make sure that we're supportive of both state initiatives, but also local initiatives to really improve workforce development with some of our partners. And then number four, advocating for labor standards, which is connected to the previous one of, also as we think about workforce development of making sure that we're also looking to champion labor standards and talent well-being within the industry as we move these strategies forward. And then the last one here to close this experience principle is really investing in destination digitalization as we think about technology being a key asset in that regards and moving some of the explorations of how do we optimize technology within the industry to also optimize the operations of a destination and facilitate the visitor experience.
Okay, so, and would you say on the digital, social media side, some of the tourism growth, say for bachelorette parties, was that organic or was that something that you guys planned? I want to know. Who's responsible?
It's organic.
Okay, so there's, it grew organically, word got around, social media made it work. Okay, move on, moving on, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll leave it to Karen to close the presentation.
So on the next steps, do one more with Tim there. So next steps, we are, thank you for this opportunity to present the high-level strategies. Next, we'll be working through the next few months while you're on your summer break. We're going to do some work sessions. We look to you if you have any suggestions on those. We're going to make sure we have partners, stakeholders, department directors to go through these, these 37 strategies, and we've got more detailed strategies to go. And then we will be doing that for the next couple of months. We're going to do a work-study session with the Tourism Development Commission in August that we'll invite all of you to attend if you're available and would like to do that. And then I guess my last question for you, Mr. Mayor and Council, is do you want us to come back with a final action plan and review it with council, or would you like us to have TDC make the recommendation and have that on consent?
Okay, if I could just add another area as far as marketing our own facilities? I mean, there's an inventory of private sector properties, obviously, venues on public property and so forth, and then our own stadium, Westworld, the sports fields, which are kind of, need to be marketed as well. Just think about that and how it appears to be, you know, really a complete effort that is certainly bound with Scottsdale, experience Scottsdale, but then how we would work our own on that. Vice Mayor Durham, did you have some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One of your early slides there showed that there was a great thirst or interest in activities relating to indigenous populations, and I don't think that there was anything specific in here about that. I mean, we do have some opportunities. There are some festivals. We also are, depending on how far you want to drive, there are some locations to the north, there's the older village by the airport too, and I just wonder whether it's, makes sense to include that, some of those in our plans because there does seem to be a very large interest in that that's not being fulfilled currently.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman, yes, that is a part of our strategies. Today, just in the interest of time, we're providing the eight principles and the 37 high-level strategies. Each one of those 37 strategies has another two to seven detailed strategies, and the Native American area is definitely one, along with creative placemaking and some more with artists. There's, there's a lot of really good information that Chris and Tim have provided through this, so I'm very excited that we have a lot of great opportunity to work with, experience Scottsdale on getting this, this plan going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Janik?
And I was just going to suggest that you be open to public-private partnerships, that when you scour the city, are there any venues, any other opportunities so that you can expand your reach and enhance tourism?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Caputo.
Just a quick question and a comment. Karen, there was a comment on the dais about business travel being off still and that it might be different going forward. I'm actually noticing business travel coming back pretty strongly. What are, what are you saying?
I'll let Chris talk a little bit about that because that's his expertise.
Yeah, I mean, certainly when we look at nationally, the numbers, you know, leisure travel is at 100-plus percent, depending on the destination that you're at, and business travels at 50 to 60% in terms of bookings, but that varies widely from destination to destination. And I think that's where we did look at some of the opportunities with Scottsdale is actually well-positioned to capture the business travel that is out there, which are smaller corporate meetings, groups, conference within companies. And if we are working more remotely, there is going to be a trend towards more group gatherings, offsites, events, which smaller facilities and destinations are well-suited to versus the New Yorks of the world with the Javits centers and hundreds of thousands of square feet of convention space. You know, those are the destinations that are lagging, so we have to kind of separate the overall numbers between how is business travel happening from one destination to another, and we're actually quite positive for Scottsdale, both on the leisure front and on the business front, that you're well-positioned based on the trends we're seeing in the market today.
Right, because we have so much outdoor open space, and that is one of our strengths. And so, and then my only comment is, we're always doing these fantastic plans and lots of research and polling, and we hear things back. And what I'm hearing is, you know, people come here for the dining and the shopping and the nightlife and the, and the wonderful vibrancy and also the open spaces and the nature and the hiking. And I just think it's important that we remember that. We sometimes get off track, and, and I think it's important to revisit the research and the data and the information that were provided and, and follow our plans, that we not just talk about it and report it back to us, you know, in the council, but that we recognize that these are the things that people come here for, and, and we have excellent plans and we need to make sure that we follow them, so, great job.
Okay, thank you very much. I think as you report out, we found there were, during the Phoenix Open, I asked how many groups and small convention groups there were during that one-week period, there were 600 of them in Scottsdale. So some properties have 10 groups of, you know, Nebraska Foundation with 20 people or 15 people, and, and so it really does add up, and coincidentally during the Phoenix Open, you know, they come here. All right, well, is that enough? Councilwoman Littlefield, if there's any other comments, appreciate it.
I'd just like to make one comment. I'd like to echo what Councilwoman Caputo just said. Give us a halfway-through-the-year review on how things are going and what's going really well and what needs working on and how are we functioning and what the results of all this is, because sometimes we get these overviews and then we never hear what actually happens, and that I think would be the fun part, so.
Thank you for that. We'll make sure to do that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good. Councilwoman Whitehead?
Well, I think the question was whether or not this goes to TDC and then comes to us on consent. I'm fine with that path versus having a second presentation to council, but you know, as long as you send it our way ahead of time.
Thank you.
Okay, then, thank you very much. We're concluded on this item.